It's 6:00 PM, Council of City does not complete its regular sessions. The night of the patient's pickup by Brian Holt. They're all here for you.
Thanks, Eric. Definitely, Father, we're thankful today for the many blessings upon each and every one of us and upon this city. And, Father, I just ask you tonight, God, to guide our plans and our words and may give us the courage and the commitment to carry out, God, the things that are going to touch the hearts, the lives, the families in this community today with your gracious, mighty name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor, the receipt of the consent. Have a motion from Councilman Rowley, second Councilman Malvaro, favor by say nine. All votes like sign?
And then one.
Motion carries. I think what we'll do is go ahead and skip down to agenda 4B, the LDG Development. This is the last one in general, we'll put it first on the agenda. Mr. Hannah?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. LDG Development is interested in pursuing a tax credit eligible apartment complex at northeast corner, northwest corner of US-75 Crawford. LDG Development is based out of Louisville, Kentucky, and has developed a number of similar products in Texas, including Steeplechase Farms Apartments in Sherman, Texas. I wanted to make sure Council understood that tax credits are not Section 8 vouchers. Tax credit program provides investors a tax liability credit in exchange for constructing apartments that are leased at below market rates. For this apartment complex, rates are expected to be around $600, $900 per month, depending on the number of bedrooms in the apartment. This development must follow the 40/60 rule, meaning that at least 40% of the units must be leased to individuals who make 60% or less of the area median income. For the Sherman Denton MSA, this means approximately $25,000 or less for a family of one person. It's a staggered step. The more people in your family, the more income you can make. You can make up to $37,000 for a family of four. Tax credit process requires the City of Denton to pass a resolution in support of the development, expressing any in-kind contributions the city will be offering as corporate project. The city has identified $500,000 in road improvements that have already been completed, completed, I think, in 2009 for Crawford Road, and in-kind contribution for the projects. LDG is here to make a presentation on the project. Staff does recommend approval based on the following flags. Half of proposed tract is currently multi-family, and multi-family is a compatible land use for the remaining tract. Leading household income for the City of Denton is $31,474, according to 2000 census. 2011 estimates place at $35,441. A family of three, which would be one parent and two children, must make less than $33,360 a year to qualify to live in a proposed development. That said, this particular product, project has garnered a number of citizen comments. I want to kind of amend to staff's recommendations since we filed this report and simply just add that council should look at every decision they make, in my opinion, on what's the 20-year impact of this. 20 years from now, how does this impact the City of Denton? And my professional opinion is that this particular project doesn't greatly reduce or enhance the City of Denton's future. This is a multi-family house, this is a multi-family development. We're not going to sink or swim based off this development. So staff would just encourage council to listen to the information that's presented by the developer and the citizens and make the best decision for the community. That concludes staff's report.
Justin? Do you have a video to play? Can we play the video? I have a video of it.
Do you want to play the video? Do you have a video, short video to play, as far as his presentation?
The thing I found since I, when I moved here, I thought this was a beautiful apartment complex. And now I look at it, it's almost two years, as a beautiful community.
My apartment is spacious, I get a lot of room, and the price is great. They have a lot of pride here.
We're giving them an opportunity to live in a nice environment, in a nice area, and be able to afford to pay no rent, but still have, you know, be able to go out, super lunches, or play the big O and do things like that.
LDG Development not only cares about their property, but the lives of the individuals that live here.
Beautiful, the appliance is all brand new. My deck, which I grew a garden this year, had tomatoes and herbs. It's like, it's like home. It is a home.
These communities, the people that live in our communities are first-time school teachers. They are people that work retail. They might be barbers. They're people that are, that serve the community every day and need a place to live.
That was one of the most exciting things that I experienced was the affordable pricing. When I actually came out and looked at it, I just thought that this would not be in my price range. But after talking to the property manager and going over the prices, I was excited to find out that it was very affordable for me, raising three kids, being a single mom, having to go to school, and even working, and then being able to pay no rent.
We are one of the first and only communities that offers a splash park. The kids absolutely love it.
Every day of the month, there's something going on here.
And we all feel very fortunate to work in a affordable housing, and it is a big added benefit, is helping, helping other people that need the help.
We also have a fitness center that has treadmills and machines that are geared towards the elder, so that they can do a lot of physical therapy, and they can go to the fitness room and use the equipment there to help them progress.
LDG is very involved in our community activities. They'll come and decorate gingerbread houses, help out with movie nights, as well as come and cook hamburgers and hot dogs for Resident Appreciation Day.
I love the view, like you can look out through a window and you can see the whole city lights up at nighttime.
LDG Development is an owner of 4,000 apartments throughout the region in Kentucky, Texas, Louisiana, Kansas, Indiana, Virginia. It is to provide first-class communities where individuals and families can live, so very proud of where they live, and who they are, and what they do, and always be accepted in the communities that we have.
I love my property manager. She is good.
It looks like I can't afford to live here.
Village, a working family apartment community off of Crawford Street. It will be 150 units of multi-family. Here's a site plan that incorporates the surrounding tree canopy with a natural living community with a clubhouse. That'll be approximately 3,000 square feet with common amenities, everything from computer lab, business center, pool. You can also rent it out with a kitchenette so you can have your parties, et cetera. We're also too proposing a dedicated parking space up to the northeast quadrant. That will be, can be used by the citizens of Denton with the walking trails, and can also be used by the tenants of the apartment complex. Here is a rendering of our three-story facade. We do use approximately about 45% Texas stone accents on our staircase towers. Remaining of the exterior would be cementus siding. Here's a little development summary. 150-unit new apartment complex, total acres of 14.91 acres. Project will have one, two, and three bedrooms. Proposed size of units will be the following: 24 one-bedroom units at 850 square feet, 72 bedrooms at 1,072 square feet, 56 three-bedrooms at 1,185 square feet. 60% AMI proposals will be arranged from $641 to $890 per month. Total investment of the project is $21,500,000. Here's our building specs. 100% stone and cementus exterior composition, 35-year dimensional roof shingles, 15-tier air conditioning units, R15, R30, building insulation. All units equipped with fire sprinklers, and all appliances are inter-star rated. Every unit will be equipped with a covered patio and a balcony. Every unit will have a laundry and dryer hookup. The apartment complex will be built to meet certified standards, and the apartment community will be a gated community with thicker mending for inner fencing. Here's just a unit rendering of our one-bedrooms. Most of our bedrooms will be with carpet. Common areas will be a Wilson Art hardwood court. Same with the two bedrooms. Here's just a quick little rendering, various spaces. Moving on to the three-bedroom rendering, very similar. This was, you know, this is 1,185 square feet, three bedroom. Here's a quick pics of the proposed clubhouse, as you see. Top far right is the common living area where you can have parties, et cetera. There's a kitchenette on the other side of the kitchen, you cannot see. Also, too, there'd be a community computer lab where you can go and print documents off, your kids can go do your homework, et cetera, or just lounge and search for websites on the internet. Site amenities. All means including outdoor patios and walk-in areas are fully accessible, so it's ADA. Site location central to retail, transportation, schools. The clubhouse with community area and kitchenette. The clubhouse will also have theater room, exercise room, health and wellness classes for all the tenants, a computer lab, patio and balcony for all units, sitting area with grills and a gazebo. For the kids, we have a tot lot and children's playground. And also, too, there'll be a community pool right behind the clubhouse. And, as I was speaking, has gazebo and grill, community gathering area. The apartment complex is fully gated, with secured access and perimeter fencing. Every building has a security camera, and there's security cameras throughout the apartment complex, including the clubhouse, and there's cameras inside the clubhouse when the offices are closed or open. There's ample lighting at nighttime, it's pretty much well-lit throughout the apartment complex. And this site location is very close to the Denny's Middle School, and I think it's a great event. Here's a quick aerial image of the proposed green space park dedicated area that can be used by Denton citizens and also to the tenants and apartment complexes. This is also very well situated because it does have a green space area along the Leesland. Crawford's Village financing, it will be funded by 9% tax credits. Those 9% tax credits are bought by private investors, which are, reset those off to, for the investment of CRA, which basically offsets their tax liability. Those credits are worth approximately $14,700,000 this apartment complex, and that would be partnered with a conventional loan at $6 million. This project does pay property taxes, will always pay property taxes. We're not asking any type of property tax exemption now or nor near future.
Any questions for Council? Thank you, Justin. We would kind of stand, stand close here for further questions. Before we get into other public comments, I know that there's several here. The reason this agenda item was tabled in December was largely in part to the fact that this Council of State didn't get more information. Obviously, a $21 million investment in Denton is significant, and the Council takes those investments very seriously. This is a good project. The question is, is this the right location? And so, the last several weeks, we've had staff and Tony, Robert Hanna and his staff, Tony Kind and his staff, the economic and all that side, really search out and, and really seek each of the answers to our questions and to many of your questions, as we've heard from you over the recent weeks. Part of that work is, everybody should have received this frequently asked questions document. That was, a lot of the answers were provided by Justin and his team, and then staff certainly has reviewed that, and we've reviewed it and discerned it pretty heavily. A lot of the information that was out there, I know oftentimes the calls that we were getting was based on misinformation, so hopefully, this document will provide accurate information to many of the questions asked. As we get into our time, we've got several of you that have asked to speak. We're going to put a, well, due to everybody's time, we need to put about a 90-second time limit on your remarks, and we would ask that when, when I call your name to speak, if your point of view's already been made, simply let us know that, and we can move on to the next person. We don't need to hear probably 22 people talk about traffic. If someone has mentioned the traffic component, well, then we'll move to the next person and their point of view on that. So, we'll get started. The first one here, Linda Beckman. Welcome. Name and address, please, for the reference.
I live off of Anzley Lane at 3504 Ransom Circle, and I know quite a few of the councilmen, and I would like to say thank you to Mr. Hannah and Mr. Beck for responding to my letter that I wrote to the City Councilman. Appreciate it. This is what I wrote, because I'm not for sure that everybody got it. It says, "Please vote no on the government apartments. We personally know the people that built the other government apartments out across from the cemetery. These apartments have continually been involved with many police activities since the beginning. We do not need, nor want, that around our established neighborhood or junior high school. Not only will crime increase, but it will increase traffic and larger attendance at Mays, which is already overflowing with elementary children. The west side of Denton is just now beginning to be established with nicer neighborhoods and businesses. What would a government apartment building, or why would a government apartment building be something that would increase the attractiveness of this part of Denton? We are well aware of the tax base of Denton. If you would want this tax base, please put this apartment in another part of this town. Knowing what you know, would you personally want this apartment building in your neighborhood? Respectfully yours, Buzz and Linda Beckman."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, ma'am. Thank you. Ms. Frills? Name and address, please, for the reference.
J.S. Frills, 109 Spring Valley, Denton. Gentlemen, in relation to the issue before you, I think the conception is misplaced. Those four corners on Crawford and 75 would be much more beneficial to the city with tax revenue, commercial properties in there that will render more sales tax for the future of Denton in the next 20 years. Problem you're going to have is, you're going to have an apartment complex that ultimately over 20 years will go down in value, go down in appearance, and probably not be kept up to the caliber that's been represented here in the view of videos. So my suggestion would be that if that complex is built, build it on the end of Crawford, where it intersects 131 out there, where you've got a lot of vacant land, and you've got a very good location for a large complex of 150 units. But I think you're short-sighted if you think that that's going to produce revenue off those four corners, which is going to be beneficial to the City of Denton, and I would ask you to vote no.
Yep. Thank you. Uh, Jim, your turn.
Thank you, members of City Council. I'll try not to repeat what's already been mentioned. I will be reading primarily though from the email I sent out yesterday. My wife and I have been impressed with the ads on TV touting Denton as moving forward. Two of the reasons Gloria and I voted for the recent school bond issue was because of the good that it would do for the students of our city and the positive impression it would make on businesses contemplating moving to Denton. Now, you and the city, other City Council members are considering allowing the construction of apartments under the housing tax credit program on a very visible corner of Denton. I would take you to the poor state of the low-rent apartments that are located on Crawford near B McDaniel. That makes a poor impression on people with school-aged children, those apartments located close to B McDaniel, those people that are considering a move to Denton. You can avoid a repetition of the poorly-located apartments presently by B McDaniel by voting down the Highway 75 apartment development. Now, it's been my understanding, or perhaps my misunderstanding, but that the 75 corridor was for commercial development only. Sherman does not have apartment complexes immediately off of Highway 75.
Certainly.
The, the Steeplechase Farms Apartments mentioned in LDG's frequently-asked questionnaire document is wisely not located immediately off the Highway 75 corridor, as would be the Denton apartments. The Denton apartments would generate very few jobs, no sales taxes, and further perpetuate Denton as just a bedroom community. The west side of our city is made up of taxpayers who pay higher than average city and county taxes. We picked this, we, we picked this part of town because of nice neighborhoods. Please do not vote to put these apartments at a location visible to thousands of people every day of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's that?
I'm going to speak from here, all right?
Yes, sir. Really need you to be on the microphone so it's on the right. And Dean Roach, you'll be asked next, so if you want us, you're in the back, you can get a position. Name and address, please, for the reference.
I'm with the fires, and I live at 6200 Crawford Lane, which is in the option of that was your proposed apartment complex. I don't have much objection to it, but I'll have to say that I lived for 30 years in rural Colorado. For the first 25 years, no problems. They build a low-income housing project within a block of my house, and I was burglarized twice in that five years. And I do object to the possibility of having to, you could, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dean Roach. I live 1409 South Linus. My concern also is crime. I lived in South Garland for a number of years when Faulkner started development down there. We lived right by Lake Ray Hubbard, and after the apartment started, they kept coming in, and Garland, I mean, Denton just approved a new apartment complex down off Loy Lake Road. So this will be another one within two miles of each other. There's vacant land all along that corridor, that if this starts and continues, you could just have a whole string of apartments there. If that's the, what Denton wants to do, I'm not going to be a part of it. I'm going to, I've been through it, and I'm not going to. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Harris?
I'm Ed Harris, and I live adjacent to the property in question. And we've lived there a long time, and we've rejoined the city, and we've participated in many things in the city. And so, I can't imagine anything except that our property will take a nosedive, and we would like to sell it and move to be with our children and grandchildren. So, I think this is going to make that pretty prohibitive unless it's just a matter of peddling it. I don't believe that this, this apartment complex is something that's just really strange and different to be put down right in the middle of what we have now. And I don't see the wisdom of placing it on the highway and showcase coming into our town. We're not talking about the, the large convention center that's being built right on the highway just south of us. There's a reason it's built on the highway. But this housing complex will most likely have some problems, and it needs to be located where it will have room to adjust, stretch, maybe whatever happens, and not be showcased for every small item, every little thing to be magnified where it is. And I think our whole neighborhood will be placed in jeopardy with this project. Now, I do many things in this city to help with housing. I don't, I'm not against fair housing for people, but I just think there's a lot better place that this could be located in our community and still serve our community and serve the purpose which it's playing for. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Hopper?
City Council, ladies and speak. One of the things that I'd like to bring to the attention is our city manager here, Mr. Hannah. Brought up the question of, how is this going to represent our city 20 years from now? 20 years from now, in my opinion, it's going to be a big negative to the City of Denton. It'll be more of an eyesore to the City of Denton, and it's not going to showcase the City of Denton and show it off like we need to, to, for this city to prosper, to grow forward. I'm also very concerned, some other people mentioned the traffic. One thing that wasn't mentioned would be the possible increase of traffic up in Anzley. I think that's something that needs to be looked at very closely. I, for one, I think it would be much better represented from a commercial standpoint for tax revenue, money generation, for our, for our fine city. I, I think it would be a big eyesore in time, and I, for one, I'm kind of tired at times of being the little brother of the City of Sherman, and I think this here would just make us even a little brother of the City of Sherman. I'm strongly opposed to this. Thank you.
Eddie Kleiger? Name and address, please, for reference.
And that's why, uh, that we would ask that you vote no for this project.
Lee Alstead? (applause)
My name is Lee Alstead. I live at 1000 West Lambers in Sherman. Thank you, Council, for giving me the opportunity to speak. I want to commend all of y'all for being an organized group. I applaud you for that. My intent is not to do anything to disrupt the city of Dennison. I will say this, since y'all are such a good coalition, why didn't y'all come buy this property if you want the enhancement of Dennison? But I'm not going there. It's just a compliment.
Ladies and gentlemen?
I will. Just, just a compliment. Anyway, things want to point out, the back half, the, the eastern half of this track of land is already zoned multifamily. The forefathers before you thought it was necessary to zone it multifamily then, so that is the best use of that tract of land. It has been zoned multifamily for 15 years. Number one. Number two, the front half is developed commercial. I love to tell you that's the best use of it, but there's one little problem. There's actually two. You take the church to the north and B McDaniel Middle School, I think it's Middle School, to the, to the northeast, and that kills any retail or public sale of alcohol. So that rules out your grocery stores, your convenience stores, and you're, by state law, it takes away, you have to be within, that, over a thousand feet from a church or a school. So it rules out any of those as possible developers of that tract of land. So what's that leave that with for the best use for a commercial tract of land? Not a whole lot. And so, they're going to go to the other side of the highway where you can have commercial development, and then they can put their vehicles by. Yeah, you can put a truck stop in there, uh, on a commercial use, but is that the best use? Is that what these neighbors want? I really don't think they want the bright lights, heavy trucks. It is on a highway, so they are going to have traffic, and retail is going to be more traffic than a park. But anyway, I just wanted to share my comments. I appreciate your views and the time. Thank you.
Listen, listen, listen. This is how it goes, okay? We address the council in orderly fashion, but we ask you to vote no, okay? That's just, we all need to be on the same page there. Ted, and you need some maintenance. Ted?
Do you want to tell them?
Anything to add there?
Gentlemen, I moved up here from Dallas 10 years ago. We live, yeah, to Little Slane Park Circle, 18 Big Garden Peoples. Only have two of our, our building, I mean, our contract, people that's working. Everybody's retired. And we're about six, eight blocks from this apartment. And I have a lot of experience with apartments. I've been living for 30 years in Dallas. And everywhere we went, we built apartments, the properties went down, and apartments fell apart, and they've moved out, and they're nothing but, but a trash now. I can tell you, I've shown you hundreds of thousands of units that have fell down. People left. And, uh, all of the thieves and the dope heads and all that type of people, we don't need in Dennison. We're more of a religious town here. That's how the Muslims live here, and we don't appreciate being in that title. I feel like we're entitled something there in 150 units apartments in our back door. We live at Little Slane Park Circle, 18 homes on that circle. There's two people live, live in our little works. No kids, and we don't want no kids.
Thanks, sir. Uh, Peter Rang?
Name and address, please, for correction. Mr. Mayor, how's it going? This is Peter Rang. I live on 3216 Crawford, and it's right by the highway, so my property is very close to the proposed project. Uh, I wouldn't talk much because many of the views have been described previously, but my worry is with the increased crime in the neighborhood that we come from apartments. Right now, we've been enjoying peace and tranquility in the neighborhood and a good situation for families. Thank you.
Thank you. David Davis? Name and address, please?
David Davis, 37 Village Green, Dennison, about one block from this proposed location. Uh, I would like to thank LDG Development for considering the city of Dennison. Uh, I don't think they've got any credit to that effect, uh, but I do agree with the majority here that this is just not the right location in our city. A couple of things to point out. You're going to build everything to the south. You've got TMC. You're going to have the Hilton Garden Center in that area. To the north, you're going to have Dennison High School on 75. Right smack dab in the middle, we're going to have some low-income apartments. Uh, you look all around the city of Dennison, you look at the low-income apartments that we have now. Tell me, tell me which one attracts anyone to want to move to the city of Dennison and rent an apartment? That's, that's a higher-level profession. I personally know some doctors and some other businessmen that, uh, are looking to move to this area, and the first thing they ask me is, "Well, where can I rent an apartment until I can decide on what location I want to build my house?" I hate to tell you, I can't recommend Dennison. I couldn't recommend these apartments because obviously they wouldn't qualify. So, that's, that's what stands before us now, is do we need some more cheap apartments coming in? Because we don't have anything to bring in the, the higher-income people, the people that want to move to Dennison and then build a house in the future and live here and grow their families here. I'm not saying, I'm not saying that we don't need some lower-income apartments. We just need them in a different area, that maybe we already have some lower-income apartments that you can continue to establish that area with the same type of building. I read, I believe in the paper or something here a while back, that the city was going to allow some infill into certain neighborhoods to kind of maybe not meet the, the current building requirements of a house, of a new home that's built in Dennison because of the existing homes that are in that neighborhood now. If I'm wrong, tell yourself, but that's, that's what I read. So, you know, that way you're not expected to build a $200,000 house in some, in a neighborhood of, you know, $50,000 frame homes. Well, we're kind of doing the opposite here if we build some low-income housing in a more established neighborhood. So that's, that's one of my concerns there.
About 20 seconds left.
Okay. The other thing is, uh, I'm 21 on this frequently asked questions. Decorative six-foot aluminum perimeter fence, see attached picture? I do not see an attached picture. I'm very concerned about what this fence would even look like. I live in Village Green. The fencing around Village Green and the exterior of Little Slane is a nice brick fencing. Very nice. Very solid, very, very sturdy. So, I mean, I wish somebody could show me this picture of this six-foot aluminum fencing that I don't think's going to hold up very long.
Justin Hazler has a picture there.
For the audience, it's a, uh, just a black wrought iron fence, but it's made of aluminum instead of wrought iron.
The only other thing I want to add is, other than anybody that's had a financial interest into this project, everybody else has had a disapproval. I hope that our city council will listen to its citizens. Thank you for your time.
And thank you. (applause)
Thank you. Uh, boy, everybody said some fabulous things today, and, uh, uh, I'm basically going to talk about history. Name and address. Mike Barton, 1220 period. Uh, I've seen this thing happen before. It's another rodeo. Basically, in Dallas, Texas, where I've lived up here for quite some time. If you know Dallas, Texas, where Dallas Cowboys used to have their field, right there at Greenville Avenue and LBJ, what we're talking about right now happened. You talk about 20 years, it took five years for that area to shift with drugs, prostitutes, about everything you can imagine. There were some properties that were $70,000 and $80,000. We're talking about 30 years ago. They ended up going into foreclosures, and they were lucky to get 40, 50, 35,000. A lot of these people bought these properties for retirement. They planned to live there for many, many years. The other thing on this scenario, there's been no discussion about association dues. Now, there may be some in here. I haven't read it all, and nobody's even thought about that. Who in the world is going to maintain the property? Association dues will start going up like crazy. Uh, you've got, I've driven through Dennison today, spent three hours. There are tons of locations that this property could go. Now Waterloo, all that area in there is an area where people want to be in that area. But that's, that looks like to me that's going to change. And you talk about having four people in one of these properties? The more people they can get in these properties, the more government money they'll get, so they'll have more children. And I've seen it. I've been involved with it, where it just turned a neighborhood down like crazy. This is LBJ, it's called the Hartwood Convent.
Thank you, sir. (applause) Jim Lightman, do you have anything additional?
I have.
Okay, thank you. Dr. John Tass?
I have a hard time staying calm. I mean, I've been through this.
My name is Dr. John Tasson. I know most of the council members and, uh, under the staff. Uh, and you have received a, a letter that I wrote, uh, earlier this week. A lot of the points that I had, uh, addressed, uh, have been covered, and I will not, uh, ask the council to bear forth on that. One thing I would like to, a couple of points to bring up, I have a little, uh, different perspective on, uh, some of this situation, particularly related to the apartment complex. I believe it's called East Coast Apartments that are located at 2800 block of West Crawford. When I moved here in, uh, December 1969, I was one of the original tenants in that set of apartments. I now live essentially two blocks to the west of that. I have seen what's happened to those apartments, and I have no reason to doubt that the proposed apartment complex, uh, will not do the same thing, and it, it is not appropriate for that area. I would also, uh, question as to whether, and some reference has been made to our neighbors to the south in Sherman, I doubt that the, uh, corners of the Highway 75 and 691, I doubt that the southwest and southeast corners of, at that property that are in the Sherman City Limits would ever be, uh, approved for this type of apartment complex. Uh, so I don't, uh, see that that's, that's reasonable. The also, the, the situation that would happen for the, for those of us who live, uh, west of the East Coast Apartments and east and northeast of the proposed new, uh, complex would be that we'd be sandwiched in between two areas here that will result in all the complications that have been referred to by the, by the previous speakers. I'd like to just say, uh, from the other presentations that were made by the landowner and the prospective, uh, developers, that, uh, on this type of situation, no matter what you say about it, you can't put lipstick on a pig. There you go. (applause)
Chip, do you have anything to offer?
We can't hear better.
Name and address, please?
Oh, my name is Chip Fiazza. I live at 1026 FM 131, which is basically the west end of Crawford Street. And, uh, just wanted to, I'm bringing a little bit different perspective. Um, there's no doubt that Dennison needs new apartment. I've been involved in that and, and helped trying to satisfy some of that need, not all of that need. The apartments that LDG is talking about would be consuming part of the need, but there's still additional need out there. There's, that's the fact. Um, whether it's low-income or, you know, um, high-end apartments, that's what, what's needed, that's debatable. But, uh, the perspective I'm coming from is basically, you know, city urban planning and land use. I've been involved in several potential clients coming to Dennison and wanting to do and develop on the west side of 75. The infrastructure's just not there to support it. That's a fact. I think that can be backed up by our city engineer. Uh, so, if you look at it from a map, you've got five intersections going east to west. That, we basically have 22 hard corners. You can discount all the ones to the west. You can't build on them on any kind of scale. That leaves you basically 11 on the east. Out of the east, you've got seven that are already occupied. That gives you three. Out of the three, there's one at the southeast corner of Crawford and 75, just south of this location. From a construction background and standpoint, it's way too costly. A client would never even go there. The infrastructure costs would be out, you know, beyond their, uh, capacity. So that, that basically leaves two corners that we're talking about at this point. Um, this subject property is one, and I know Mr. Alstead says that there's some difficulties and restraints that limit what he's able to sell it or who he's able to sell it to. I understand that. Um, but from a citizen of Dennison, is this the direction that we want to go as far as planning? I know everybody's eyes light up when they see 21 and a half million dollar investment. As a construction company, you know, I'm all about growth. That's what, what we want. We want to see things grow and move. I hate to say that I'm disappointed that we're discussing low-income housing. I'd rather be talking about an industrial plant moving out to the west side of town. But that's where we are. So the question comes down to, you know, you've got two available lots on 75, on the east side, that you can build on. Is that where the city really wants to invest? And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. (applause) David Davis? Name and address, please?
My name is David Davis. I live at 1026 FM 131, which is basically the west end of Crawford Street. And, uh, just wanted to, I'm bringing a little bit different perspective. Um, there's no doubt that Dennison needs new apartment. I've been involved in that and, and helped trying to satisfy some of that need, not all of that need. The apartments that LDG is talking about would be consuming part of the need, but there's still additional need out there. There's, that's the fact. Um, whether it's low-income or, you know, um, high-end apartments, that's what, what's needed, that's debatable. But, uh, the perspective I'm coming from is basically, you know, city urban planning and land use. I've been involved in several potential clients coming to Dennison and wanting to do and develop on the west side of 75. The infrastructure's just not there to support it. That's a fact. I think that can be backed up by our city engineer. Uh, so, if you look at it from a map, you've got five intersections going east to west. That, we basically have 22 hard corners. You can discount all the ones to the west. You can't build on them on any kind of scale. That leaves you basically 11 on the east. Out of the east, you've got seven that are already occupied. That gives you three. Out of the three, there's one at the southeast corner of Crawford and 75, just south of this location. From a construction background and standpoint, it's way too costly. A client would never even go there. The infrastructure costs would be out, you know, beyond their, uh, capacity. So that, that basically leaves two corners that we're talking about at this point. Um, this subject property is one, and I know Mr. Alstead says that there's some difficulties and restraints that limit what he's able to sell it or who he's able to sell it to. I understand that. Um, but from a citizen of Dennison, is this the direction that we want to go as far as planning? I know everybody's eyes light up when they see 21 and a half million dollar investment. As a construction company, you know, I'm all about growth. That's what, what we want. We want to see things grow and move. I hate to say that I'm disappointed that we're discussing low-income housing. I'd rather be talking about an industrial plant moving out to the west side of town. But that's where we are. So the question comes down to, you know, you've got two available lots on 75, on the east side, that you can build on. Is that where the city really wants to invest? And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. (applause) David Davis? Name and address, please?
My name is Chip Fiazza. I live at 1026 FM 131, which is basically the west end of Crawford Street. And, uh, just wanted to, I'm bringing a little bit different perspective. Um, there's no doubt that Dennison needs new apartment. I've been involved in that and, and helped trying to satisfy some of that need, not all of that need. The apartments that LDG is talking about would be consuming part of the need, but there's still additional need out there. There's, that's the fact. Um, whether it's low-income or, you know, um, high-end apartments, that's what, what's needed, that's debatable. But, uh, the perspective I'm coming from is basically, you know, city urban planning and land use. I've been involved in several potential clients coming to Dennison and wanting to do and develop on the west side of 75. The infrastructure's just not there to support it. That's a fact. I think that can be backed up by our city engineer. Uh, so, if you look at it from a map, you've got five intersections going east to west. That, we basically have 22 hard corners. You can discount all the ones to the west. You can't build on them on any kind of scale. That leaves you basically 11 on the east. Out of the east, you've got seven that are already occupied. That gives you three. Out of the three, there's one at the southeast corner of Crawford and 75, just south of this location. From a construction background and standpoint, it's way too costly. A client would never even go there. The infrastructure costs would be out, you know, beyond their, uh, capacity. So that, that basically leaves two corners that we're talking about at this point. Um, this subject property is one, and I know Mr. Alstead says that there's some difficulties and restraints that limit what he's able to sell it or who he's able to sell it to. I understand that. Um, but from a citizen of Dennison, is this the direction that we want to go as far as planning? I know everybody's eyes light up when they see 21 and a half million dollar investment. As a construction company, you know, I'm all about growth. That's what, what we want. We want to see things grow and move. I hate to say that I'm disappointed that we're discussing low-income housing. I'd rather be talking about an industrial plant moving out to the west side of town. But that's where we are. So the question comes down to, you know, you've got two available lots on 75, on the east side, that you can build on. Is that where the city really wants to invest? And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. (applause) David Davis? Name and address, please?
My name is David Davis. I live at 1026 FM 131, which is basically the west end of Crawford Street.
Is that where the city really wants to invest? And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Two different cards, probably the same family, maybe?
Yep, yep. That's right.
Name and address please for the record.
Yeah, Babe Guttridge at Lewis and Crawford. And I pass one of these out to everybody on the city council. This is how the cancer starts. Here at each place, I don't know who the property management company is, but this didn't happen overnight. These times were coming through vans, mattresses, and all types of garbage out there. There's construction material lying around. It's just the image we want on I-75, a pit bull up on the upper deck there with all the other things that are out there. Flat posts that haven't been fixed. That's not really what I feel like Dennison needs by any stretch of the imagination. Highway seventy-five going south towards Sherman is prime real estate, every bit of it. Why would we even entertain the thought of putting apartments on Highway seventy-five? You can drive on down to Bikini, Fairview, and Allen. If you don't see apartments, you see restaurants and retail shopping. My first visit to the Allen Outlet Mall was in nineteen eighty-six. Nothing but weak deals, but the outlet, you know, the outlet shopping mall. Now look at that land. For twenty years, it sat empty. But now, look at the development. One of the biggest shopping areas in DFW is at Stacy Road and Highway seventy-five. Here's what we don't have. You think we have a lot of nice restaurants in Dennison, Sherman, and also shopping? We don't have a Buelos Mexican restaurant. We don't have a Chewy's Mexican food. Corner Bakery Cafe. We don't have a Elle Phoenix Mexican, Thud Rucker's Hamburgers, First Family Buffet. I'm not going to read all of these. Apolito's Seafood, Razu's Cajun Grill. You can have a lot of fun there. Racine Cane's Chicken Figures, Rock Fish Seafood and Grill. We don't have a Sawgrass Steakhouse, Spring Creek BBQ, TGI Friday. That's just some of the restaurants on here. What about retail shopping? Why would we trade apartments for all this growth that could be here in twenty years? It won't be here overnight. But in years come, these restaurants and these shopping will come. Amy Jewors, Brookstones, Coldwater Creek, Dick's Sporting Goods, Phil Walker, Brings Furniture, Half Price Books, KG Fashions. None of these are in Sherman, Dennison. Kay Jewors, LA Fitness, Liz Crafters, Marshals, Mardell's Christian Office Supply, Men's Warehouse. You like the way you look, guys. Maybe we need to look a little bit better and shop there, right? We've got Michael's Arts and Crafts, Nassar Julie, Jared Jewors, Office Max, Party City, Pier One Imports, Riker and Sports Authority, Staples, Sky Park, the Container Store, Things Remember, Toys R Us, Oka...
About twenty-five seconds, sir.
And that's pretty much it. I can go on and on, but that's just, that's just the future of Sherman, Dennison. I think we need to be looking at that instead of being shortsighted. Thank you very much, sir.
Name and address please.
London Spaxley, twelve-twenty-seven Deer Creek, Dennison. One of the newest additions in Dennison. We pay extremely high taxes. I have looked at most of the people that are here tonight. I see attorneys, I see teachers, I see physicians, I see professional people. I've lived in Dennison for sixty-three years. I've seen it come, and I've seen it go, and I've seen many apartments come, and I have seen what has happened to these apartments. My husband and I started in a very small home in Dennison, and we worked our way up to a very nice home in Dennison. And as I look around at all of these people here tonight, every one of them have done exactly the same thing that we have done. We have put our life into our property. Some of us are still paying for that property, but a lot of these people are retiring. Whether you, councilman, believe it or not, these are the people that made Dennison, Texas. So I'm asking you, yes, I want development for Dennison, but I want retail development also. And I do not want the traffic, the trash, the crime that is going to come from these apartments. I want to save my neighborhood. I'm proud of the neighborhood that I live in, and I think all these people are choose.
Paula Perkins, anything to add?
Paula Perkins, I live at thirty-five-ten Ransum Circle. Some very good points made tonight. Mine is different. I think LDG has a beautiful concept. I think Dennison needs it. But as a single mother who raised two children in Dennison, that's not where I would want to live. That's a poor location to raise a family in. So please, consider a better location. Consider the families that are going to be living there right next to the highway, the kids that are going to crawl up, squashed in between the school and the highway. That's, that's what I would have you consider for a better location.
Thank you.
I would like to ask for just a little bit of a longer time to speak, if that's fine with you, favor.
Really need to try to keep it in two minutes, please.
Okay. Well, I got on this train this weekend. I wasn't even aware of this development even at the time, okay? And in that time, I did a little bit of research, and I provided Mr. Hando the documents that I found on the internet, and he went ahead and provided them to the council, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate your time for letting me get up here and talk, sir. And I'm not up here to talk about Section Eight, I'm not up here to talk about income assistance. I'm up here to talk about the questionable business practices of LDG. And where I'm at on this, I have a document here, and I would love to share any of these documents with anyone in this building or out of this building. And Senator Tom Coburn, a good watchdog for the federal government in the state of Oklahoma, had a website that is basically about government waste. And the LDG Corporation, for their mismanagement of projects in the Indianapolis, Indiana area, they were going to be fined eight-hundred-nine thousand dollars for mismanagement. One of the big concerns was employees engaged in widespread pattern of criminal activities, including dealing in narcotics, residential entry, firearm offenses, welfare fraud, and also the notices allege that continuing employee misconduct created one of the most expansive counterintelligence operations in the city of Indianapolis. Okay? LDG declined to be interviewed on this. LDG was on the hook for eight-hundred-nine thousand, five-hundred-and-eleven dollars received from two thousand and five to twenty-ten. Payments that the IHA, which is the Indianapolis Housing Authority, says were ineligible because the tenant's involvement in criminal activities, criminals living in apartments without permission, and other violations of federal regulations. This is well documented. Apologize and counter them. That was brought against LDG. LDG, on June nineteenth of twenty-ten, agreed to pay a settlement of four-hundred thousand dollars in regard to those claims. So it basically said, well, okay, we want to negotiate a settlement. They negotiated the settlement, and it talks about here how they were going to pay it. Okay? Now, after this, there was a similar housing development in Louisville, Kentucky. There was some, what can I say? Questionable business practices between the city staff and LDG. The town council decided the project was not a good idea. Well, the mayor in that town decided, well, it's probably not that bad of an idea, but they nixed it. But three years later, LDG came back to the city of Louisville and persuaded the mayor to, let's pursue this anyway. We don't care what the citizens think. We don't care what anybody thinks. Let's just get it done. So I, I have more. I would like to share it with anybody that has...
And we got, I'm going to let Mr. Hando respond, because we do take your...
Yeah.
...work fully. Thank you for your research there, and we took it seriously, and I'll let Mr. Hando speak.
I would like to say one thing, though, if you don't mind, sir.
Very quickly.
I'm sorry, I've lost my train of thought here. But I, oh, I know what it is, I'm sorry. I would be shocked if the city leadership of Dennison, Texas, agreed to go into a partnership with LDG. I mean, I just can't believe they would go there, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and I'll let LDG, if it's okay with the mayor, defend their own actions. But we did, we did send, Mr. Jones sent that information to them and said, what is your response to this? They provided a letter from the Indianapolis Housing Police Department that was dated April fourteenth, twenty-eleven. Briefly, I'll just say that the letter compliments LDG for the work they've done over the last year in improving Cambridge Station and the amount of crime that was at Cambridge Station, which was the Indianapolis Project. And they provided a letter from the City of Lewisville, Jefferson County Unified Government that was from the Code Enforcement Division that basically said all of their, all of their properties are presently, the last sentence is, LDG Development LLC has continued to work with our code enforcement staff to resolve property maintenance violations as they occur on all your portfolio of single-family properties. I don't know, and to be honest with you, I didn't read the last, the last two articles. Didn't have time to do that today, so it wasn't a disrespect, it just I didn't have time. I was answering a number of phone calls.
I understand that. Like I said, I wasn't aware of this activity until this weekend.
Yes. But I, one comment I want to make sure is clear for the, for the community to understand is that the City of Dennison staff prides itself on being unbiased, who provide the facts. The policymakers, policymakers make the decision. It's how professional governments run. And there is no, nobody's in cahoots with anybody on how things go around here. We all try to make the best decisions for this community. Mayor, I, that was my...
Justin, do you have anything to add to that?
I can add, I can definitely point to it. I can add some comments. Quick response, if I can, please. Quick case. The Indianapolis property, that project was a rehab project we came in. It was a problematic property for the city of Indianapolis. Came in, did a rehab. After basically six months of having the existing property management company in there, we found out they were being fraudulent. Crime within point fires, we fired them, replaced them with another third-party property management company that is a latter bloom. And then we actually cleaned that property up now, and that's the reason why you see the, the letter standing there. Basically, it was credentials on cleaning the property. Third one, Louisville. Based on our projects are in code compliance, that's why I got the quick letter confirmation for that. And other comments, I think some of that stuff was from a blog that came out during that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Selena Lillard?
Lillard.
Lillard.
One of the, there are two things that I want to mention, and one of the problems that I have seen with what's going on, bubble one, South Willis Lane. One of the problems I see is that the comment about, well, we cleaned it up, blah, blah. If we're wanting Dennison to grow, could we be proactive instead of reactive? Because if you put this government housing, when I first moved here, I drove in and I thought, this is the colossal, sleepy town. This is so great. Raised my kids here, and it was great. As a teacher, I see lots of police activity, which doesn't need to happen. And because of what I do and the knowledge I have, I kind of know where these families are. If we're going to increase Dennison, let it not be, oh, wonderful hospital. Oh, great new stuff over here. Liquor store, that could be handy occasionally. Government housing. That's what we're going to see. Because if I had said that, I would not have moved here.
No, I wouldn't have.
Because we should, it should be inviting and vibrant, not, this is great, but it doesn't last too long. You know, you don't want to drive downhill when you're coming in. The next thing is, when I go to shop, you really don't get to do a lot. One of the problems is, demographically speaking, if you want the higher-end items, you're going out into Sherman, Dennison, together. And it's because of our demographics. While everybody needs someone to live, I've been there for it, been there. I chose to want to stay that way. So if we continue to bring that instead of high-end apartments to where you're going to, you know, people are going to say, the doctors and the lawyers and the, oh, cool, we can stay there. I personally know many teachers who have gone, and they live in Sherman, because there is no place that they want to live here as far as apartments. By the low peak, don't put that there, because you will lose some citizens to Dennison.
Thank you. First rest, do you have anything new to offer? First rest?
First?
All right. Mr. Hando, do you have anything else this time?
Unless council has specific questions or staff, I have nothing.
Questions, session from council. First of all, I want to say that, thank you everyone for being here and being a part of your, your government. That's, that's very healthy. Thank you for your emails and your calls and your, and your letters. And again, as I opened the comments there, the reason we took the time, and we took a lot of time that, that evening in December, was because it's an important issue. There's no question, and very few of you reviewed the fact that we need more housing in Dennison. We need all kinds of housing. We need high-end apartments, we need several levels of single-family homes, and we need affordable housing for the working class. This is not, and that's why hopefully the frequently asked questions is important, because it's not subsidized housing, it's not government housing. It is low-to-modern-income housing for working families. However, again, the question tonight is not the need for that, but the location. So again, I just, I just want, regardless of where the council goes this evening, that to be clear on what the project is, so that, that we're all talking on the same, same page. Discussion from council or motion?
Mr. Mayor, based on the comments, and I agree, you know, with what's been said, and I do have concerns about how that's going to develop and when it's going to develop, I really do, and how long it's going to be, but, you know, at this point in time, I can't support the resolution. I don't have a motion ready. I'm not supporting it.
Thank you.
Evan?
What'd you say?
I have a motion from Councilman Spindel, second from Councilman Malvern, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
All of both, like sign.
What was the motion?
Motion carries. The request for the resolution's been denied. We'll take just a minute here to allow some of you to declare the room, please. Again, it's critically important that we understand the terms of this. So we're confident that the, that the document that you have in front of you is factual in nature and help us be cheerleaders for this community in Dennison's movement forward. We've made a lot of progress in recent years, and, and it's a culmination of the work of a decade and plus, several decades. And, and these kind of projects get this kind of consideration all the time. I want to compliment Robert Handed and his staff, again, Tony Kine and his staff, Chief Birch. We have a lot of information that this council used to make that decision tonight, and we appreciate your, Mr. Hando.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just make a couple of comments, because, you know, first of all, I agree, I want to thank all the, all the citizens for both the phone calls, the emails, and the officers showing up tonight. One of the things, you know, I do want to, just want...
a decade and plus, several decades. And, and these kind of projects get this kind of consideration all the time. I want to compliment Robert Hannon and his staff, again, Tony Kine and his staff, Chief Birch. We have a lot of information that this council used to make that decision tonight. And we appreciate your input, Mr. Hannon.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, just make a couple of comments. Because, you know, first of all, I, I agree. I want to thank all the, all the citizens for both the phone calls, the emails, and then obviously showing up tonight. One of the things, you know, I do want to just point out to, you know, to our citizens to, just to ponder on as, as food and thought. As the city does grow, you know, it's, it's going to be inconvenient. A lot of people talked about, you know, wanting retail and commercial development at that corner, and a lot of corners. And with growth will come inconvenience. And with, with growth will come tremendous traffic burdens and all those things. So, you know, I really hope the citizens will, will really, you know, think on some of those, those issues, because we will, it will come a time when we are going to have traffic issues on Crawford, you know, worse than we already do. And if there's folks that think there'll be less traffic because of a commercial development on that corner, it's going to create the same traffic issues. So, you know, bear with, bear with the city as we grow, because it's, it's not always smooth sailing. And, and we have been very proactive field last couple of years. But, you know, be, you know, bear with us, because with growth comes, comes our challenges. And we'll continue to try to face those as, as we can. But again, I want to say I would appreciate everybody's comments and conversation.
Also, I wanted to reflect on that, the comments that, I do appreciate everybody's input with it. We've got a lot of emails, a lot of emails. We've got a lot of staff gave us several different documents, even that, I think I was getting stuff at 5:00 today, trying to respond to those, trying to make sure we had a good decision. And I think we did the right thing today to move Dennison forward. And again, appreciate everybody coming out tonight.
Thank you.
You guys, we'll, we'll just kind of, I guess, go into a two-minute recess to allow you time. If you, you want to stay for the other stuff, we are annexing, doing annexation at 621 and 75. So that's going to grow your tax base. At the time of 7:11, we'll go into recess for two minutes. At the time of 7:15, the council now will come back out of recess, get into the other good items for the evening. Agenda item number 3A, public hearings on 130 West Day Street. Ms. Brockin.
Mayor and council, we're here tonight to receive a report. Hold a public hearing considering ordinance for a zone change from local retail district to light industrial district for property of the second addition, lots 2 through 4, the East 1830, Lot 5, Block 1, 130 West Day. Advocate Curtis Ross is the owner. He would like to locate a used car lot and have major and minor auto repair plans on building a 1728 square foot building for the repair. He has the adjacent car lot to the south. We anticipate no financial or no adverse financial impact. The claimant has only looked at this and recommended approval, and staff's recommended approval as the latest plan recommends, like a restaurant.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda?
I'm in support.
Name and address, please, for the record.
Yes, sir. Curtis Ross, 1421 West Mark Drive, McKinney, Texas. I own Dennison Motors at 820 South Austin Avenue, next to Taco Bell, beautiful. And intend to build a four-way shop to help my customers have additional business in the area.
Okay. Really, I just have one comment for you, or a question for you.
Sure.
You know, through the years, this particular property has, has not always been maintained to its fullest. And I just want to hear from you that now that you're going to own it, that you're going to operate it, that it's going, you're going to take pride in it regardless of its location.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Is there anyone here else here which can speak to this agenda? There being none, public hearings closed. Questions from council?
Move to approve.
Second. I have a motion from Councilman Malburn, second from Councilman Beck, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Agenda item 3B, public hearing on the 122 West Prospect Address. Ms. Brockin.
Mayor and council, we're here to receive a report. Hold a public hearing considering ordinance for a zone change from light industrial district to local retail district for property of the J.J. Fairbanks Edition, Lot 13, Lot 7, 122 Prospect. Applicants Philip Webb, owner and buyer Fernando Salas, would like to locate a laundromat on the side. The property is vacant. A light industrial zoning will not allow the laundromat, and so he would like the retail zoning.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda? Will name and address, please, for the record.
Good evening. I'm Fernando Salas. I live in 14, I mean, 3678 Gloria Lane, Dallas, Texas. Me and my wife want to buy the property. It's five lots, two of them are retail, the other ones are light industrial. We want to make three other lots retail. That way we can accommodate the building better and have better parking for the retail, for the laundromat. My wife and I are going to be running the laundromat. Plan to be there in 10 years, hopefully for when we retire.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for our panel? Is there anyone else here wishing to speak to this agenda? There being none, public hearings closed. Questions from council?
Move to approve. Second.
A motion from Councilman Spindl, second from Councilman Beck, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Agenda item 4A, Ms. Brockin.
Mayor and council, we're here tonight to receive a report. Hold a discussion adopting ordinance for a voluntary annexation for 427.196 acres, more or less, submitted by TPJ Properties, Tom Johnson. They would like to annex a property in order to market the property and have city services. We did hold the resolution. You adopted the resolution, and we had a first and second public hearings, and we're here now to adopt the ordinance tonight.
Questions from the council?
Make a motion to approve, sir.
A motion from Councilman Beck, second from Councilman Brody, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Council now go into executive session pursuant to check number 551, takes the bill, code to seek advice of city attorney pursuant to section 551, number 71 regarding 715 West Sears, and also to talk about economic development pursuant to 551, number 77. Provide staff direction on TPJ Properties. The time is 7:25.